If you come to the podium tonight, please identify yourself each time and speak into the microphone. The board will follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. There's extra copies which are near the door as you came in. After the case has been called, the applicant and/or representative shall come to the podium, identify him or herself, give his or her address, and then present the case. The planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. If the case is a public hearing, it will be open for public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding this application will come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and direct any questions to the board. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any public input. Once all public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed to the public input and the board will then move on to a decision. No further input is allowed at that point. So with that, can we... Michelle, please call the first case.
Thank you, sir. First item on the agenda this evening is case number PB 1611-1. Upon the matter of request by Yasmin Young, acting as agent for Community Nursery School of Arundacoit for signage approval to install two new signs on premises 644 Titus Avenue in a mixed-use commercial district.
Hi, I'm Yasmin Young. My number... My address, I'm sorry, is 4707 St. Paul Boulevard. I'm a resident here in Arundacoit.
And I'm Nora Claus. My address is 70 Behrens Road.
We were here a few weeks ago for the working meeting, one of our representatives was, and apparently when you were looking at our proposed signers, there was concern that the freestanding sign to be on Titus Avenue was a little bit too small. We had discussed it for a few weeks through the board and the church and decided that we wanted to keep the sign the same size, but we did increase the logo just a little bit for increased visibility. I have printouts if you would like to have a copy. Sure.
Leftovers. Unless you need any, Michelle?
I would like one for the file, yes, sir.
Will you deliver?
I can bring it over.
You're in charge of delivery.
Sure.
I don't think there were any other concerns. I don't know if there's anything else we need to talk about or...
So there was a couple of things at the workshop. First off, this looks to be the same as what we originally received?
It's actually 10% larger.
10%?
Yeah, it's not much larger.
Oh, so 10%, the actual logo on the actual sign?
The logo is, yes.
Okay. We talked about the additional sign that's underneath it?
Yes.
And there was just...
Yes.
So is there...
So Lori, the lady that came on our behalf at the last meeting, explained that you guys were very concerned about us possibly handwriting something like this. We don't have any interest in that. We agree that it should be something that's professional, you know, vinyl graphics or something like that. We really wouldn't have very many signs made. It would either be for open houses or we have a garage sale that we do about once a year. I don't really foresee any other events at this point that we would be, you know, advertising to the public. But yes, we do agree that it should be something that looks professional that, you know, aligns with the quality of the sign itself.
And so for the public that wasn't at the workshop, there's actually two signs we're talking about? There's one on the road and one on the building? Do you just want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure. So the second sign is a suspended sign, and it would be on the northeast corner of the building, and it would actually not be very visible from Titus Avenue, but it would be visible for the people coming into the parking lot or from the Cooper kind of corridor there. The school's entrance is actually at the rear of the church, and as it is now, we have no signage whatsoever for the school at all except for a sign that's on the building next to our doorway. So unless you've been there before, you wouldn't really know where to look. So the suspended sign would actually be really high. It would be at the level where the windows are, so hopefully it would be a deterrent for vandalism, for kids to, you know, try to knock it down, and high enough that you can see it from far away, so it's not obscured by cars or other things. There are bushes in the area there, too.
And how long has the business been there?
We've been there for 60 years.
For how many?
Sixty.
Six, zero?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Fly by night.
Fly by night.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll go to the board. Does anybody have any questions? Brett?
No.
Michael? Rich?
I have no issue whatsoever with the sign. I would like to point out that we did receive a letter from hipco chairpersons Ann Burns and Jeff Goldblatt, and I appreciate their review of this as well. The only comment I had had at the workshop was I wanted to have the language that we put on the removable sign to mirror the language from the sign statute that we reviewed about a year ago regarding professional quality.
And I believe we had that... We took those notes for the workshop, and then we can mirror that language or I can pull it from the code.
Okay. I just think it's important that that removable sign be professional quality and look as nice as the sign that's above it.
We agree.
And other than that, I have no questions regarding the application.
Okay, great.
Michael? Okay, with that, I think the next thing we'll do is we'll open the public hearing, and so you guys can have a seat.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak for this proposal? Or just speak on this proposal at all? Seeing none, I think we'll close the public hearing. And with that, before we do this motion, per Rich's comment, are we going to actually reference the language or are we going to reference the code?
I can give you the language, so it can be sort of part of the motion if that's unmeanable.
Sure. So who would like to make the motion?
I can do it.
Okay.
I'm sorry? Oh, we have to do seeker for this?
It's a type 2, so you just want to state that for the record?
I'll make the motion in terms of seeker, then. I would...
You don't have to... You don't have to make a motion.
She found that language yet? No.
So now can Mike... Okay.
On the matter of PB 1611-1, upon the matter of request by Yasmin Young, acting as agent for Community Nursery School of Arundacoit for signage approval to install two new signs on premises 644 Titus Avenue in a mixed-use commercial district. Move it as approved, passed?
With that, all those that say aye?
Need a second.
Oh, second, sorry.
Second.
I would like to add to that the language, so I think we have it now.
You would indicate that the sign or the removable portion of the signage shall be professional in appearance and/or commercially manufactured, including lettering, surface, and frame?
I'm willing to second the motion with that addition.
Okay. With that, all those that approve, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And we have two absent. So with that, it passes five aye. No nays, and two absent. Thank you. I hope you have another 60 years in Arundacoit. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Upon the matter of request by Premier Sign Systems, acting as agent for Susan Harrington for signage approval to install new signs on premises 659 Titus Avenue, otherwise known as 657 Titus Avenue, in a mixed-use commercial district.
Hello, Jamie Raleigh with Premier Sign Systems. I'm at 10 Excel Drive, Rochester, 14621. So we are proposing to remove the two existing awnings that are on the building currently. We would remove those, bring them back to our shop in Arundacoit, and recover those with black fabric, and those... Both awnings would have white roll-painted graphics on them. Once we complete that, then we'd bring them back to the building, and we would just reinstall them in the exact same place that they are currently.
With this, is there any questions by the board? Brett?
No, I thought everything was well done at the workshop meeting and very clear. Thanks.
Okay, good, thank you.
Looks nice.
Thank you.
I agree with Mike, it looks nice.
I think it's a great upgrade to the existing...
Thank you.
...sign, so thank you.
Yeah, they've done a lot of work inside, so now they're trying to bring it, you know, to the outside as well, so everybody kind of sees those upgrades and gets them some more business as well, so.
I just want to say I appreciate you replacing the awning in the back.
Yeah.
Taking the branding all the way around.
Thank you.
With that, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this application? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Once again, this is a type 2.
Correct.
No vote required, just declared. With that, do I have a motion? Seeing none, I'll make the motion.
In regards to PB 1611-2, upon the matter of request by Premier Sign Systems, acting as agent for Susan Harrington for signage approval to install new signs on premises 659 Titus Avenue, also known as 657 Titus Avenue, in a mixed-use commercial district.
I propose we approve. For a second?
I'll second.
With that, everyone who votes aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye, so it's five ayes? And two absent. No nays. With that, it passes. So with that, the next items on the agenda, we'll go through them in order. The first item is the tabled item, which is in regards to the Lighthouse Point property. So we had at the most recent workshop, the applicant came and responded to the engineer's statements that were in a memo. They came and talked us through them, and at this point in time, I'll pass it to Carrie for a further update. For anything more you want to add to that?
Well, at this point, based on the comments from our town engineer that were provided to this board and to the applicant in a memo, we're now... This board is now awaiting updated information and revised materials that respond to those raised questions or requests for clarification. So at this time, you don't have additional or new information that would address the town engineer's request for additional or clarifying information. Our understanding is that the information's forthcoming, and so it's certainly something this board can consider voting to take the item off the table so that next month at the December meeting, it will be open for a public hearing, and new information can be presented by the applicant.
So tonight, we'll be taking it off the table just for the purposes of the next meeting, making it a public hearing?
Correct, so that it will be advertised as a public hearing for the next meeting in anticipation of the applicant providing additional detail and any other addressing the comments or questions that the engineer raised in response to the site plan review.
Is there any questions before we move to do that? So I would like to some... Well, actually, I'll move to take it off the table, if that's okay. So in regards to tabled item, case number PB 1603-3, upon the matter of request by Land Tech Surveying and Planning, acted as agent for Lighthouse Point Property Associates for preliminary and final site approval, Woodlot Environmental Protection Overlay District permit and flood plan EPod permit to construct a 125-unit multifamily apartment development comprised of two four-story, 52-unit family apartment buildings with ground-level parking and one three-story mixed-use building with 14 units of multifamily apartment development and 8,000 square feet of commercial space on the first floor, a two-story clubhouse with seven dwelling units with pool and site-related improvements on premises 951 and 1027 Thomas Avenue and 45 Pattonwood Drive in a River Harbor district. I move to take that off the table for purposes of a public hearing for the next meeting.
Yeah, I would just suggest adding to that proposed motion that it will be taken off the table for the next meeting, advertised as a public hearing. And just for... As a point of clarification, the public hearing remains open. It was only tabled, it was never closed, so this isn't a new public hearing, it's a continuation. And we're re-advertising it so we can ensure that anyone that's interested in speaking attends the next meeting.
And Carrie, as long as we're on the record, what is the exact date of that meeting where the public hearing will be held?
December 19th.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, that's okay. It's December 19th. There's a slight change in next month's schedule to accommodate the Christmas holiday, and the fact that our offices are closed on Monday, December 26th, so everything's accelerated a little bit.
And when's the workshop?
It's on the 5th, I believe. So that's one of the occasions where the planning board workshop will be held in the small conference room because the zoning board of appeals will be hosting its regular meeting here in this room.
But for anybody listening on TV, the date where they would have an opportunity to be heard would be December 19th?
Monday, December 19th, correct. The planning board public hearing will be here in this room.
But the one on the 5th is...
On the 5th, the workshop meeting will be held in the small conference room here on the first floor. Same, the usual time, 7:00 PM.
And just for those in the audience and watching at home, the workshop is a public meeting, there's just no opportunity for the public to speak at that meeting. That would be on the 19th.
Correct.
So with that, is there a second to take that?
Second.
Thank you, Brett. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Once again, five ayes and two absents.
Okay. Three.
With that, the next item is a town board referral, and I'll pass that to you.
Thank you. It's a town board referral, upon the matter of request by Michael Alessi for a special use permit to convert commercial space into multifamily apartment building on premises 2012 East Ridge Road in a C business district.
And I'd be happy to provide a little bit of background on this particular application. The special use permit was submitted to the town board for special use permit because in the C business, multifamily, which is anything more than a single family, is... requires a special use permit. And this is actually a parcel that has three separate buildings. The building in the center is the one that's being converted currently or in the past. It's been a mixed-use commercial where it was... It was a mixed-use building where the first floor was retail space and the upper floor was residential, and now the owner of the property is proposing to convert the building so that the lower level is residential and the upper floor continues to be residential. So it would be a two-dwelling unit structure, which meets our code definition for multifamily because it's more than one. And so it requires the special use permit, and by requirement, the special use permit needs to have the referral from this board before it can make a decision. And the public hearing will be conducted at this month's meeting for the town board.
So Carrie, in the letter, it references one of the reasons why he wants to do this is due to the poor parking. Did you say that? I'm sorry, I missed it.
It was...
Oh, in the...
Yeah. The biggest concern for potential commercial tenants is the lack of street-side parking.
Right, but for residential access, it's more than sufficient, and so the... From a site, you know, capacity issue, residential in this particular space is actually much easier to accommodate and is less of a concern from, you know, with respect to trip generation and things like that. And so it's actually downgrading the intensity of use or land use at this particular location.
Is the parking that we see, the six spots in front, are those for both units?
And there's also parking in the rear, and my understanding is that the upper unit has parked in the rear, and I think... I believe will continue to do so, and so it's very possible that, you know, anybody that's, you know, the folks that are the occupants of the lower level might use the front spaces or may elect to use the side. So it's... They've got a few different options.
If there was concern from a standpoint of commercial that it was difficult to get out, I mean, the concern should remain the same.
And I don't think it was an access issue. I think it was a sufficient number of spaces to accommodate a retail occupant. So in a... If it's a residential situation, there would be less... Fewer cars associated with the use of a first-floor residential dwelling unit versus a first-floor commercial operation.
Will they be changing the facade? I mean, the...
It already looks like a house, so currently it has a residential appearance, so I think they would just be making changes to maybe only further the residential quality of the structure.
Did the pre-existing use have parking spaces in front the same way they're laid out in this map that we've been provided?
Yeah.
And the reason I ask that is it's disconcerting that people might be backing out onto Ridge Road if they park in front, and I didn't know if they were doing that before.
They are. The spots are there now.
So they mentioned it as a concern, to Mike's point.
I don't think...
Pardon me? They did mention that as a concern, backing out onto Ridge Road.
Yeah.
Carrie, to the other point, you said something about parking in the rear, but it doesn't show that.
The sheet isn't big enough. Because the building goes right to the top of the page. And what pray tell is cold storage?
Where's... I believe it just... I think it just means that...
Like a shed?
I think just a open storage or storage area.
So it's not heated, is that what the...
Correct, probably not. It might be just a...
Like a porch or something, or...
Yeah.
Does it exist now?
I believe that it does.
At the top of this paper, is that... It seems to me like that little bump out.
It's this way, right?
Yeah. When you look at it, that Ridge Road is at the top of this paper. So the apartment appears at least to be oriented towards the rear, like the entry and the exit of the building seems to be oriented towards the rear, just in terms of getting a handle on what we're looking at, I think.
The question is easy, is the family room going to be in the front on Ridge or in the back in the lot?
It's difficult to tell from the...
Can't. My issue is the structure itself looks like a house, acts like a house, it's basically a house. I don't have any problem with it being for tenants. I do question the safety of having tenants backing onto Ridge Road, though.
So there's nobody here to ask if there's alternatives?
There isn't, because this is an application before the town board. What you certainly could do is share those comments to the town board so they can consider it in consideration of the special use permit, and at that point, the applicant will be making a presentation to the town board as part of the public hearing for the matter, and so it could be addressed at that point. I will say, though, that this has been an operating retail location that...
Oh, yeah.
So either past boards or would have looked at the fact that it's, you know, it's on East Ridge Road and so... And there are other parcels that have similar sort of shallow, because of topography, shallow parking in the front, and so it just requires some care. But there is quite a bit of...
That being said, my argument would be that a commercial user who goes there once or twice a year is probably going to be paying a lot more attention than somebody that comes bounding out of there repeatedly during the course of the day, would be my argument. So I think the fact that it's a private residence could make that more unsafe than if it was a commercial location where there was very little traffic in the past.
So if I understand, we're either supposed to make a positive or a negative, and with either one of those, we could make comments as points of concern?
You can, yes. I would propose making a positive recommendation with... I, I would propose making a positive recommendation with the request that the town board look at the parking issue and see if it's a concern to them or anybody in the public.
Is the, is the cold or the outdoor storage, is that the front, is that, is that on the Ridge?
I look at it, it looks like it's on the back to me, because Ridge Road is down here and then I think the bump out's up here, but it could be the exact opposite way around based upon what we're seeing. I mean, when I, when I look at that as cold storage, I think it's just like an indoor-outdoor porch.
There's a whole front porch on this, on this...
Yeah, and if that's the whole front porch...
Yeah, but I mean, the front porch is almost, I'd say, two-thirds of the front of the building.
I agree with Mr. Huber, it looks like it could be the exact opposite of what we thought, and the cold storage is actually the front. But to me, it, it's a porch, just from what I can tell.
Yeah. Does see the entry doors on the bottom of that.
It does, okay.
Yeah.
And I guess we're always talking about green space with everything we review. It doesn't look like they're very large apartments. We've got six spots in the front and possibly spots in the back. I question whether there's even a need for six spots out front.
There's additional parking in the back, and the entrance and exit maybe is in the back.
Yeah.
I would, and it's relatively dangerous. I mean, I, I hear what you're saying.
So, let me make sure I got this right, Rich. So what I have is, so far, a motion for a positive referral and the town board to review the parking in front, which requires backing out onto Ridge Road and the safety.
Which appears to require it from what we see.
Was there any others to add to this motion?
And perhaps the volume of parking.
Yes, absolutely. I mean, it's, I can't picture, well, I guess I could picture a family with six cars, but...
Well, it's two-family, right? So you have upper and lower.
I know, but they already talk about the upper parking in the back now.
Right, so it, it seems like there's, I mean, I don't know, the application is not very clear, but it seems like there might be an awful lot of parking in the back to not necessitate the parking that's in the front. And so if you could get rid of the parking in the front to avoid both the safety, the safety concern and increase the green space, that would be win-win for everybody, I think.
I think so, too.
I kind of like that. Do you want to make that as a potential suggestion? Am I going to add that to the parking?
Sure. I mean, and just to justify that, I don't think we have, we still don't know what's what here. And if there was, you know, a little bit of show about where the parking might be, who parks in the back? Does anybody park in the back? And the distance, if I'm not mistaken, between that building and the building adjacent to it, which is a home restaurant, isn't that the...
Yep, the Oriental Restaurant.
No, it's Polish, isn't it?
No, that's around the corner.
Am I in the wrong corner?
Yeah. I know that from personal experience. Repeated.
That restaurant isn't on Vine Dale?
Am I allowed to use the name of the restaurant?
Yeah, yeah.
It's a great win, great win, Chinese food. Or are you thinking of the Polish restaurant?
I'm thinking of the Polish restaurant. Polka czad is actually behind the building that sits on the corner. It's on Vine Dale, but it's the second...
Behind the Lilox.
Second structure.
Point laundry.
There's a structure, and then there's a driveway, and then that building on Vine Dale.
But this, the back of this does indeed, that, that piece of property in the back is long and extended east and west.
Yeah, so the Polish restaurant's over here.
Right.
This one's right here.
I know, but...
I don't know what's back here.
There's nothing back there. I think there's a garage back in here, at least, I pulled right in here today.
And there was no, was there parking back here?
There were cars. I don't know for whom.
So it's possible there's enough parking in the back?
Yeah, that's what...
For everybody.
Well, the thing that makes me think that is if you look at the plan, if you look at the plan, at the top of the page there, it says blacktop curb, and it goes along the back fence here. So it seems to indicate to me that everything from the back end of the house to that line is probably pavement.
That's, that's correct, and all the way over to the side street.
So there's like way more parking there than is necessary for anybody.
And the, the restaurant doesn't park there because they, in agreement with the bank, that they park across the street.
Carrie, could I, could I just ask, there's, there's nobody here regarding this application to answer our questions. Is that because of anything that the town may have said to them, or they just chose not to be?
No, I, to be honest with you, I indicated that the planning board referral doesn't have an opportunity for any public input or comment, and so that there wouldn't be a reason for the, for the applicant to come to this meeting. So that was on me there, typically there isn't an opportunity for public input on this.
But there is an opportunity for town board or for planning board input, right?
Well, the planning board reviews the application and has to make a referral, and which you're, you're in the process of doing. If there are any opportunity for feedback or questions, it would be coming at the town board during the special use permit consideration. So they would be taking your feedback and referral into consideration as they're contemplating the special use permit application before them.
Perhaps we could say, excuse me...
I was just going to say, that, that being said, it's within your right, if you feel like you have insufficient information, to hold it over and ask the applicant to come and engage in a dialogue with you. While there's no requirement for a public hearing in connection with the advisory recommendation, you can certainly ask for a presentation.
I, I think that's a possibility, or we can indicate to the planning board, or to the town board, that the planning board did not have the benefit of being able to question the applicant, and that we have concerns regarding the volume and location of parking.
Yeah, and, and my recommendation would be to move forward with your recommendation, but, you know, couch it with the fact that you think the town board should have a more thorough and in-depth dialogue with the applicant and require a presentation, and really dig into the detail of the public hearing.
I'm not comfy.
Would you rather have the applicant here?
I mean, it would have been, would have been nice tonight to have the applicant here and not postpone his town board thing. But that being said, I, I don't know, I'm just, I can't help but agree with my colleague that, that, do we even need parking in the front? And would it be nice to have a face-to-face with the guy and say, you know, how many people you got? Is it a hotel or is it an apartment?
He states in his letter in the application that one of the largest concerns for the commercial tenants is having to back out onto Eastridge Road from the front parking lot. And now you're going to put residents in there.
He says later on, though, that it's going to be less traffic to have to do that, so...
Right, but there's not going to be less traffic on, on Eastridge Road. You know, you're still going to have people, I understand it's going to be less volume, but you're going to have people doing that on, on a daily basis.
So do we have the...
Sure. The, there is a workshop meeting before the next town board public hearing. So the public hearing set that's happening regardless of the referral situation from this board, the public hearing's been set, that'll be held. The town board won't be, won't make a decision until the referral's been received, but the public hearing will go on. However, at the 5th, at your workshop meeting, we could make the applicant aware that he should attend so that he could address this board and answer questions and provide additional detail.
Then I would ask council, can we make a referral based upon a workshop presentation?
It would be better to do it as part of this meeting, a regular meeting. It could be done at a workshop, but from my perspective, and I don't want to speak for the board, but it sounds like your concerns with respect to traffic and the location of parking probably won't change based on what's provided. It sounds like there's concern about ingress and egress out onto Eastridge Road, so it may make sense to just alert the town board to that concern and ask them to investigate possibly consolidating parking into the rear or minimizing parking in the front of the building to the maximum extent practicable.
So I was going to just ask that question. So could we amend potentially your motion to say eliminate the parking in the front, providing that there's sufficient parking in the rear?
My suggestion would be that you encourage and recommend to the town board that that be investigated, not that that be a requirement, because it may very well be infeasible based on, you know, any information that the applicant can provide. But I would, you know, if the motion reads that it be recommended and investigated, I think that would be appropriate.
The only thing that I could think of that the applicant might say is, it's my understanding that the applicant also owns the property on the other side, right?
It's actually one contiguous parcel, so there are three separate buildings on one parcel.
So he or she might say, well, sometimes the parking in front of the building next door fills, and now, and then I have additional space in front of the house. I, I just kind of thinking if I were the applicant, that might be something what I would say. But I definitely think that it would be more advantageous to eliminate that safety risk and increase the green space, especially since it seems like, I mean, for this use, there's way more parking there than is necessary.
And with all due respect to our, our town board, aren't we now, by doing it this way, asking the town board to act in a planning capacity? We want you to look at the amount of parking, we want you to look at the location of parking, the safety of parking, all things that are traditionally planning board issues.
That's a good question.
You are, but you're asking them to look at it under the guise of, of a use approval, so the special permit, so they can look at, you know, the amount of spaces that are needed in connection with the use or where they should be located. So while they are, you know, certainly site plan questions, they do go to the use, so it is appropriate to ask them to look at them in this instance.
I'll be honest, I'm sort of like Mike now, I'm a little concerned making a positive.
Does that, does that mean that if the business next door, which is the same parcel and contiguous, does that mean that this is an invitation for overflow parking? I don't know.
I mean, there's still parking in the back, so it's not like people are not going to have a place to park, they might just have to walk a little bit.
I mean, there's always a possibility, the owner comes in and says, you know what, we don't even need parking out front, we just put that on the map because we had to fill the space.
It would be like, and additional cost on that, I'm sure, though, to remove that parking and restore the grass, but it would give the apartment a more residential look and feel, and probably increase the curb appeal over there.
I'm trying to think of how we make a recommendation. So let me try something. What if we, we say we can't make a positive or negative due to the lack of information, but believe you need to look at the parking and all the rest and leave it for the town board? Because I, I'm uncomfortable making a positive, too, like Mike said.
Well, I think we need to be careful to look at the zoning issue versus planning issues. The zoning issue is what the town board needs to review and decide based upon the nature of the building and the special use. I have a hard time making a positive recommendation when we don't know the answer to some very important planning issues. And the question really is, do we want the town board to act in the, in the capacity of a planning board and make decisions, which they're certainly capable of doing, I would, or, or do, would we rather not make a positive referral and we be the ones to decide on parking?
How does that work? So basically, the town board can take our input or ignore it, correct?
Yes, they have the right to, they can consider it, they don't necessarily need to adhere to it one way or the other, it's a recommendation. So in theory, this board could recommend approval and the town board could deny the special use permit application or vice versa.
But the town board has said, we want you to look at this from a planning perspective, and we've identified some very relevant planning issues.
So I'll go back. Does anybody want to make a positive or negative motion? Because I guess we can't make a non-motion.
Yes, your options are either positive or negative, or you could choose to hold it over to the next meeting. Or the fourth option is invite the applicant to come to your workshop, and you could take action on the recommendation at that time.
We can take action at the workshop?
You can, yeah. It would, it would be better to do it at this meeting, but you have the authority to do it at the workshop since it's a regularly scheduled meeting.
As long as we have the authority to do it, that's what I would prefer to do.
Okay.
So I would rather talk to the applicant.
I, I just, I misinterpreted what was stated before. I got the impression that we didn't want to make a recommendation from a workshop, but if we can, I'm all for it.
Yeah, it's a regularly scheduled meeting that routinely happens, so you're allowed to.
Okay. That would be my motion.
I would second that. Can we take a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? And we have two absent.
Okay.
Let the court have that motion, Michelle.
It actually ended up pretty easy at the end of it, so that was good. So we'll make sure that the applicant is aware that they should be in attendance at the December 5th workshop meeting and prepared to address the questions that were raised tonight at this board.
That would be great.
Okay.
Thank you. The next, Michelle, do you want to call these out? The next one is, next table item? I'm sorry. The zoning board of appeals referral.
Do you want me to call it off?
Do you want to call it? I'll just talk about it.
I think I can just give an update that the item is still, seeker has still not been finalized or completed. The project environmental impacts are still being reviewed. There's some conversations that are continuing between the town engineer, our town engineer, and the applicant's team of engineers that have been studying the stormwater retention facility, or stormwater management facility. And so my understanding is that our town engineer has raised a couple of questions, and we're still awaiting a formal response from the applicant. And at that time, when that occurs, this board will be alerted and revised information and material will be circulated.
So for everybody out there, that's the Densmore Road project.
Yes, it was, it's the 160 Densmore Road application.
Any questions for her? Okay, so the next one was a sketch plan conference, and this was in regards to the properties at 4225 Culver Road and 4250 Culver Road. At the workshop, the board reviewed the sketch plan that the applicant put forward, and they will actually be on the agenda at the public hearing in December and also at the workshop on December 5th. So that will be coming back to the planning board. And with that, I think the only other matter of business, Michelle, is approval of minutes. Okay, so I don't know if everybody's had a chance to review these or do, or not, has everybody had a chance to take a look at them? These are the minutes from October 24th. With that, could I have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And with that, can I have a motion to, is there any other business before the meeting, the planning board?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. That, meeting's closed.